Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our town hall meeting. It gives me a great pleasure, Anton, to welcome you to this town hall meeting to share progress and discuss developments regarding the construction of the Second River-Neya Bridge, linking Assaba in Delta State to Ntia in Anangwa State, where we are gathered here today. The Second River Bridge is much anticipated, and key national infrastructure with immense socio-economic benefits for the joining states and in these entire nations. The project by the federal government of Nigeria is represented through the Federal Ministry of Works and Housing in cooperation with the Nigerian Southern Investment Authority and funded via the Presidential Infrastructure Development Commission. Existing on First River-Neya Bridge dates back to 1965, since that time it has served as a major road connection, bridging the cities of Assaba and the West Bank and Ntia and Seis Bank. Then it's part of the Trans-African Highway between Lagos and Mombasa in Kenya, and in addition to being the main east-west connection within Nigeria. Meanwhile, due to the population growth in the area and the high rate of urbanization, the existing bridge is in poor condition and simply cannot deliver the needed capacity to carry existing or growing traffic volumes, creating traffic bottlenecks and road safety issues like we can see today. The Second River-Neya Bridge is part of a new motorway ring which aims to minimize traffic congestion on the old bridge and to strengthen the entire region, with zero strength since Nigeria generally handles domestic international trade routes as well. The new bridge is located at a visible distance downstream from the existing bridge. And this link road is expected to be forty-six point nine kilometers long. The project has been split into three phases: phase one, one point six kilometer bridge and ten point three kilometers road; phase two A, seven point five kilometers; the Second River-Neya Bridge; and phase two B, with Z boss of seventeen point five kilometers to Ntia linking. Julius Berger was contracted to provide the planning, logistics and construction of phase one. When completed, the Second River-Neya Bridge will provide immense benefit to the nation. The key infrastructure linking the east and the west of the country and the main artery with the trans-african highway between Lagos and Mombasa. This bridge is a key national infrastructure that will remain great, the southeast of the nation, promoting greater economic growth and boosting of the trade and commerce locally for the residents nationally and internationally. It will spur an increase in investments agriculture and trade, particularly with Ntia Main Market in the region, which is a major trading hub and key commercial capital, allowing you improve in quicker access, for example, with a more efficient connection to Lagos, another key commercial capital. And it will reduce the hardships of commuters, improving traffic flow and road safety. As mentioned, Julius Berger is currently constructing phase one of three construction phases. The scope of work for this faces covers the construction of the one point six kilometer bridge over Neya, two secondary bridges at the Morkon Village Road and Antani Road. Construction of New Cloverleaf interchange at Ntia Overe Road and together ten point three kilometers roads in total. The construction itself is highly challenging. There are several critical components to consider, including the planning, logistics and safety considerations of working over water with varying water levels. Even more challenging is the construction and land for the ten point three kilometers of road with in phase one. The chosen right-of-way for the roads was carefully considered to ensure a minimal impact on the citizen and urban development. The choice was best for the city, but required carefully considered solutions. The road construction had been achieved on extremely soft and sandy terrain. Julius Berger had missed these challenges with strong solutions. The foundation work in the river has been carefully planned and coordinated considering the varying water level of the River Neya, of up to twelve meter between the dry and rainy season. Construction of the main bridge is being built by incremental launching from the west and east approach and the balance can deliver method into center part, the navigation channel. Additionally, all improvement measures required for road construction, including vertical drainage and horizontal dam base reinforcement are implemented in order to guarantee the load-bearing capacity and to accelerate the settlements of the sand dents, which are seven meter high on average. I will highlight these innovations on the next slides. Until now, progress is achieved, and time includes the Second River-Neya Bridge, the construction is completed, and the sub-structure finishing works are in progress. The second bridge is completed, all improvement works are in progress, Calvert's and Drainer's almost completed, the Overy interchange is in progress, the Toy Station is also in progress. I would like to share with you a few photographs that visualize some of the innovations and progress made on site. Here, you will see one of the all improvement innovations implemented for the highway construction, which is the use of the geotextile as basalt reinforcement of the embankment. Implementation of this innovative material ensures the safe accommodation and distribution of vertical loads, and also has substantial time savings benefit, allowing for shorter construction time, the rapid sub-sol consolidation. In addition to use of geotextile, Julius Berger has also implemented use of prefabricated vertical drains, as part of the all improvement methodology for the highway construction. The use of prefabricated vertical drains has several benefits, especially in consideration of settlement, of the soil. Usage accelerates drainage of soil leading to faster settlements. This also provides an additional time-saving benefit, faster supporting achievement of shorter construction times. Geotextile in case and columns have also been used as a part of the foundation methodology. This innovation supports improvement of embankments and ground with low bearing capacity. The columns act as mega drains, which also speed up the settlement and consolidation process, allowing settlement to happen with the construction field. This photo is a wonderful capture of the launching of segment twenty-seven of the north side deck. The land you see in the background is the Assaba, on the Delta side of the bridge. So far, the bridge is seen as a length of seven hundred fifty-five meters. Here, just this casting of the cement for bridge segment twenty-seven, which we just saw being launched on the previous slide, this work is happening at the casting station on the Delta State side of the bridge. The project has a total of fifty-six segments, two decks, with twenty-eight segments, and each which moves over water and is used to support construction of the superstructure. Thanks to Julius Berger's marine service capabilities, implementation of such solution is seamless. We also see here free balance cantilever bridge with three spans of one hundred fifty meter each, two spans of ninety meter each, with a total length of six hundred thirty meters. On the next slide, here we get a closer look at the main bridge, the balance cantilever method, the view from Anangwa State side to the Delta side, with spear tables in view, which are ready for casting. For the Toy Station, which is located on the Delta State side, construction is ongoing, as you can see, at completion, the Toy Station consists of sixteen toll booths, eight on each side for the roads. The station will also include service and maintenance facilities, such as control building, operation and maintenance building, vehicle service building, utility and security building, for the administration of the road. On the next slide, this photo was taken on the Anangwa State side, when shows the embankment filled to the final level, several sites of the embankment is seven meters. So, where interchange will not only connect phase one of the project with phase two B, the Ntia Newo to the Ntia Nugo Expressway, but also with Greater Road Network in Anangwa State, located in Obosi, in Anangwa State. Now, I would like to share with you a beautiful video that captures the project progress as of August, this year, when we last had the chance to capture the project from the world's eye view.
What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our town hall meeting. It gives me a great pleasure, Anton, to welcome you to this town hall meeting to share progress and discuss developments regarding the construction of the Second River-Neya Bridge, linking Assaba in Delta State to Ntia in Anangwa State, where we are gathered here today. The Second River-Neya Bridge is much anticipated, and key national infrastructure with immense socio-economic benefits for the joining states and in these entire nations. The project by the federal government of Nigeria is represented through the Federal Ministry of Works and Housing in cooperation with the Nigerian Southern Investment Authority and funded via the Presidential Infrastructure Development Commission. Existing on First River-Neya Bridge dates back to 1965, since that time it has served as a major road connection, bridging the cities of Assaba and the West Bank and Ntia and Seis Bank. Then it's part of the Trans-African Highway between Lagos and Mombasa in Kenya, and in addition to being the main east-west connection within Nigeria. Meanwhile, due to the population growth in the area and the high rate of urbanization, the existing bridge is in poor condition and simply cannot deliver the needed capacity to carry existing or growing traffic volumes, creating traffic bottlenecks and road safety issues like we can see today. The Second River-Neya Bridge is part of a new motorway ring which aims to minimize traffic congestion on the old bridge and to strengthen the entire region, with zero strength since Nigeria generally handles domestic international trade routes as well. The new bridge is located at a visible distance downstream from the existing bridge. And this link road is expected to be forty-six point nine kilometers long. The project has been split into three phases: phase one, one point six kilometer bridge and ten point three kilometers road; phase two A, seven point five kilometers; the Second River-Neya Bridge; and phase two B, with Z boss of seventeen point five kilometers to Ntia linking. Julius Berger was contracted to provide the planning, logistics and construction of phase one. When completed, the Second River-Neya Bridge will provide immense benefit to the nation. The key infrastructure linking the east and the west of the country and the main artery with the trans-african highway between Lagos and Mombasa. This bridge is a key national infrastructure that will remain great, the southeast of the nation, promoting greater economic growth and boosting of the trade and commerce locally for the residents nationally and internationally. It will spur an increase in investments agriculture and trade, particularly with Ntia Main Market in the region, which is a major trading hub and key commercial capital, allowing you improve in quicker access, for example, with a more efficient connection to Lagos, another key commercial capital. And it will reduce the hardships of commuters, improving traffic flow and road safety. As mentioned, Julius Berger is currently constructing phase one of three construction phases. The scope of work for this faces covers the construction of the one point six kilometer bridge over Neya, two secondary bridges at the Morkon Village Road and Antani Road. Construction of New Cloverleaf interchange at Ntia Overe Road and together ten point three kilometers roads in total. The construction itself is highly challenging. There are several critical components to consider, including the planning, logistics and safety considerations of working over water with varying water levels. Even more challenging is the construction and land for the ten point three kilometers of road with in phase one. The chosen right-of-way for the roads was carefully considered to ensure a minimal impact on the citizen and urban development. The choice was best for the city, but required carefully considered solutions. The road construction had been achieved on extremely soft and sandy terrain. Julius Berger had missed these challenges with strong solutions. The foundation work in the river has been carefully planned and coordinated considering the varying water level of the River Neya, of up to twelve meter between the dry and rainy season. Construction of the main bridge is being built by incremental launching from the west and east approach and the balance can deliver method into center part, the navigation channel. Additionally, all improvement measures required for road construction, including vertical drainage and horizontal dam base reinforcement are implemented in order to guarantee the load-bearing capacity and to accelerate the settlements of the sand dents, which are seven meter high on average. I will highlight these innovations on the next slides. Until now, progress is achieved, and time includes the Second River-Neya Bridge, the construction is completed, and the sub-structure finishing works are in progress. The second bridge is completed, all improvement works are in progress, Calvert's and Drainer's almost completed, the Overy interchange is in progress, the Toy Station is also in progress. I would like to share with you a few photographs that visualize some of the innovations and progress made on site. Here, you will see one of the all improvement innovations implemented for the highway construction, which is the use of the geotextile as basalt reinforcement of the embankment. Implementation of this innovative material ensures the safe accommodation and distribution of vertical loads, and also has substantial time savings benefit, allowing for shorter construction time, the rapid sub-sol consolidation. In addition to use of geotextile, Julius Berger has also implemented use of prefabricated vertical drains, as part of the all improvement methodology for the highway construction. The use of prefabricated vertical drains has several benefits, especially in consideration of settlement, of the soil. Usage accelerates drainage of soil leading to faster settlements. This also provides an additional time-saving benefit, faster supporting achievement of shorter construction times. Geotextile in case and columns have also been used as a part of the foundation methodology. This innovation supports improvement of embankments and ground with low bearing capacity. The columns act as mega drains, which also speed up the settlement and consolidation process, allowing settlement to happen with the construction field. This photo is a wonderful capture of the launching of segment twenty-seven of the north side deck. The land you see in the background is the Assaba, on the Delta side of the bridge. So far, the bridge is seen as a length of seven hundred fifty-five meters. Here, just this casting of the cement for bridge segment twenty-seven, which we just saw being launched on the previous slide, this work is happening at the casting station on the Delta State side of the bridge. The project has a total of fifty-six segments, two decks, with twenty-eight segments, and each which which moves over water and is used to support construction of the superstructure. Thanks to Julius Berger's marine service capabilities, implementation of such solution is seamless. We also see here free balance cantilever bridge with three spans of one hundred fifty meter each, two spans of ninety meter each, with a total length of six hundred thirty meters. On the next slide, here we get a closer look at the main bridge, the balance cantilever method, the view from Anangwa State side to the Delta side, with spear tables in view, which are ready for casting. For the Toy Station, which is located on the Delta State side, construction is ongoing, as you can see, at completion, the Toy Station consists of sixteen toll booths, eight on each side for the roads. The station will also include service and maintenance facilities, such as control building, operation and maintenance building, vehicle service building, utility and security building, for the administration of the road. On the next slide, this photo was taken on the Anangwa State side, when shows the embankment filled to the final level, several sites of the embankment is in so, where interchange will not only connect phase one of the project with phase two B, the Ntia Newo to the Ntia Nugo Expressway, but also with Greater Road Network in Anangwa State, located in Obosi, in Anangwa State. Now, I would like to share with you a beautiful video that captures the project progress as of August, this year, when we last had the chance to capture the project from the world's eye view.
What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. What about this? What about this? I do not know. I do not know. I am scared. Our company has been constructing major infrastructure projects across Nigeria since 1965. We have proven track record for successfully completing work on time, no matter the challenge. We continue to set standards for technical leadership in the construction sector and seek to pioneer state-of-the-art construction methods and technologies. As we have for the Second River-Neya Bridge, to ensure that value-driven innovations are prioritized as a benefit of our clients in the country at large. On continent, with out doubt, that is the strong commitment of all stakeholders and support of our host communities. Julius Berger will unfailingly deliver on the project requirements on time and up to the highest standards, up to Julius Berger's standards. At this time, I ask you all to join me in expressing thanks to all who have made this project a reality. Thank you.
Through different control of works, second Nigah Bridge project, NIWE, Portia, Ntia, Anangwa State. Sir, request for construction of an access route connecting Loco Amokom, Idoko Madu, and Powerline Communities with the Old Nigah Bridge Route. We, the members of Loco Amokom, Idoko Madu, and Powerline Host Communities, the Second Nigah Bridge Project, first and foremost wish to thank Mr. President, Jaramo Hamadu Bahari, through the Federal Ministry of Works and the House, Mr. Babatunde, right in fashion line, for this laudable project, which is a welcome development to the whole community. However, we want to use this medium to request you to construct an access route that will connect these aforementioned communities with the Old Nigah Bridge. This requires dislocation by the fact that the design of this Second Nigah Bridge project blocked the communities from accessing the Second Nigah Bridge Route. The design of the Second Nigah Bridge Project has no privileges for step down to assess the various communities to this laudable project, to use your good offices, to consider the importance and necessity of the requested access route, because if it is not done, it will create hardship instead of development, it is meant for the whole communities. We shall remain grateful if this request is granted. We assure you that the good relationship existing between the aforementioned host communities and Julius Vega Nigerian PLS will be sustained throughout the duration of the execution of this welcome and laudable project. We have a number of problems that came up with the flooding, the last flood in the area, which was of course caused by the activities of Julius Vega and what appointed her, as well. Remedies will be done. The flood situation in Loco Amokom wasn't after the culvert construction, which was very low, which was very hard, thus resulting water movement across and resulting to flooding of our farmland. Also, the evacuation of the excavation of topsoil close to the River Nigah spread on both sides of the Second Nigah Bridge to support the growth of plants, to check erosion towards, to cover the ground level. Allowing massive, massive inflow of water into Loco Amokom, this resulted to greater erosion, peace, damaging of roads, and collapse of buildings. The unfortunate situation would be likened to Robbie Peter to pay for. It is devastating, and we insist further excavation should cease, as I'm feeling of the area commenced without delay. There is also the phase two program. On phase two A, there is absolute decay, delay in the payment of compensation to the host communities, and the host communities are open, as above, in boost and open up. We shall be grateful if the need fully is done. Thank you.
I'll say again, I am a responsible minister for Books and Housing, who has a responsibility for making it work and did it best. Thank you all for all your efforts. It is a very, very simple and straightforward. First of all, the communities, those communities from Bridge Project and associated communities do not want to be left behind in the economic prosperity that will obviously come out of the creation. You see that most of the communities, all communities are low lying, and don't want to be left like Nyukusa in the Kaingidam or Finema in Boni, the energy project. It's a very, very serious prayer, and writing note to you about it. Loco Amokom is an example. As a child, I used to come to Loco Amokom to be with them, talk about it, and you can see what the bridge has done to them. So, one way or the other, they have to be part of the prosperity, rather than being by the side, prosperity is going to pass. There are still issues about the obesity projects, development, which I think is responsible to the Federal Ministry of Works, then of course the usual CSR, which we discussed with Julius Vega, which are very, very important for us. Now, the presentation for managing direct shows that there's phase two A and phase two B. I think phase two A is more important for us at this point, because when the bridge is finished in 2022, and there's no phase two B, it's a bridge to nowhere. It's a bridge to nowhere. So, what a beautiful bridge, what a strong bridge, was what a bridge that goes somewhere. So, it's got to go back to the Benin Expressway and connect with there, so that Assaba, Ony Char, and other committees in between are a bit more peaceful with the great development that you expect to come. So, we believe that you do that for us. Finally, not on the Bridge Project, but as we say in our partners, if you plant the Eroco Tree, but I'd pick out if I would there. I was surprised to learn that the honorable minister was at the Six Massivium today. I wish I were there with him, but we can talk about it maybe on the phone or something. It's a very solitary building, very solitary environment over there. We drive past it, and it's just there, so it grows with grass and so on. I understand that you expected us, the host community, to do something about it. That's a federal government facility, so let me try challenging the federal government. Hand over to us, and we'll take care of it. Hand over to us. We will generate the international consensus for the next Six Massivium. Please, pray for all of us in Nigeria, we believe you to do something to get Zik Masolion working. On that note, I think I've spoken for all of us, to those communities. I thank you very much again.
He was also represented by the M D today here. And Phase two A and Delta State has been awarded to Julius Berger. We will soon start the construction when the contract has been defined and signed. And I expect that by next year, we will start the construction when the minister knows the details. And the C S R is to have a good cooperation and relation with our host communities. I think what we're doing here is very good. We involve all the communities, see all of them also here. And we have regular meetings with our project team. And of course, the bridge is huge, the road is long, so a lot of communities involved. But we try to hear every voice and we listen to each problems. And of course, we can not only find solutions, that must be done to be said. And first, we have to discuss, and then we have to discuss, of course, there's also always a way out which benefits the bus parties. And I think since Julius Berger here with the bridge, it is a huge project for both states, for each and for Asaba. It will bring a lot of economy and I'm sure that all the communities will participate on this project for the next, not only during the construction time, also for the next fifty or one hundred years. Thank you.
Let me start by conveying the regret and the apology of Professor Ibrahim Gambary, the Chief of Staff to the President, to all of you for his inability to be with us today. As at last night, his visit was on schedule until some things came up and the President requested him to attend to some other things. Essentially, a division of labour so that we can cover more ground with the same personnel. For that said, let me convey the very best wishes of Mr. President and the federal government of Nigeria to all of you. And let me also use this opportunity to convey his wishes in advance to you for a Merry Christmas and an end to a very challenging 2020 and the best wishes for a more prosperous 2021. Let me also reaffirm that the project is on course, as you have heard from the contractor. We have lost a few weeks here and there to when we had some misunderstandings and some strikes. And thanks to the leadership provided by the two governments on both sides, Governor Biyano and the Governor Delta State, Governor Senator Koa, the traditional institutions here, those were soon brought under control and normal return. But the time lost at that time is time lost and we have to try to claw it back. We also lost some time when Covid hit, when closures had to happen of entrances into cities and communities. Again, we will try and claw back. But notwithstanding, clearly 2022 torch wood will be the delivery date for this project as already planned. I lose a few weeks here and there, but nothing substantial. So, let me reassure you of Mr. President's commitment and federal government's commitment to this. Let me also speak to what this project means, what it is already delivering and what it can deliver. This project is a 414 billion Naira project. And I like to say that again, 414 billion Naira so far. The bridge on its own is 206 billion. The roads, two A and two B, which His Royal Majesty has mentioned, will cost a combined 208 billion Naira. So, in this community alone, that is the amount of investment of the federal government of Nigeria under President Bouari. And let me highlight the fact, no, if you want to applaud the President, please do so. Let me highlight the fact that this commitment remains although the price of oil is now about forty dollars per barrel. So, as for those two A and two B, the specific answer to the point observation made by His Highness, the O B of Ounita, is that there will not be a bridge to nowhere. Those roads, as you have heard from the M D of J B and the M D of R C C is somewhere in the house. Where is he? Aha, he's right behind you, sir. So, they've been awarded, they're standing up for recognition. So, and we are just concluding paperwork. Thank you for the thumbs up, sir. So, all is on track. But in order to build this bridge and spend that money, the contractors will be buying 644,000 tonnes of aggregates. They don't keep those things. So, this is the economy that this investment generates, people who produce and supply aggregates. They would require all the way and we see all of the sand failing, four million cubic metres of sand. That's the business that is in this economy because they won't break sand from anywhere. They will require 68,000 tonnes of cement and 21,000 tonnes of reinforcement and 19 million litres of diesel. This is the economy that this bridge is on its own command for Nigeria and Nigerians who trade in these businesses because they need to be supplied, they need to be paid for. And they are also commanding labour within this community. And I think the last time we checked, it was 1,400 plus M D people employed here, indigenous people. So, but this is the beginning of the story of the prosperity that this bridge brings. And those who know it better than me, real estate administrators and valuers will tell you that from the day this bridge started, the price of land around this place has begun to go up. And that is prosperity coming. So, what we therefore need has already been given in the speeches by the representative of Oko Amakom and by His Highness. What we need most, they have been given, but they have to be reiterated. We need peace to finish this work. We need peaceful coexistence to finish this work. We need also some sacrifice. We have to give some things in order to get some things and we need to be patient. Let me speak specifically to the issues about flooding and environmental issues raised by the Oko Amakom community and to say that even without a bridge being built, there is the evidence now of extreme climatic conditions across the world. But what your complaints raise necessitate the need to go back to an environmental, social impact assessment because one was down. And we will see what it shows us and I assure you that we will remediate as best as possible what you go through. There has been a lot of disruptions, even from the presentation. Moving millions of cubic metres of sand has disturbed the natural order of things and they have to settle so that we can have this bridge. But once all of this is done, I assure you, as His Royal Majesty said, you will not be left behind. But that process will start from now. The assessment will start from now to see the request about the access road, to see how we can better control the flooding that you go through, to also see what we can do in terms of helping to re-establish or repair some of the damage that has been done. Compensation is a big issue. It's an ongoing conversation. Our appeal is that the state governments are the best people to help us engage with the communities on this matter. And if they work with the communities, we can work with them to see how we can bring some sense of agreement around the issues of compensation. But as I said before, some sacrifice has to be made, something has to be given. The government doesn't have all of this money. As you all know, oil prices have dropped. But that sense of sacrifice and commitment means that even if the price of oil drops further, this project will not stop. That is a commitment I can give you from the President. But it would then require you to reciprocate some of this by making some sacrifices where they are necessary. I think that I will stop there as far as the issues around the road and the bridge are concerned. The only other matter, Your Majesty, is the Zik Masolion. And to say that I went there to visit the place again on the directive of Mr. President himself. He was concerned, he wanted to know what has been happening since he commissioned it and he asked that I visit and report to him. I have seen and I will file my report to him. But just for the benefit of members of the public is that immediately after that commissioning, Mr. President approved that a management committee be set up to manage the asset so that it does not go into disuse. And the members were picked largely from the indigenous community representatives and also a representative from the museums and monuments because that is part of the function of the building and also from the family of the late President himself, Dr. Nan Desi Kwe. They were inaugurated, I believe, in July in my office. And we have since then tried to settle them down. We had to do the inauguration virtually because of Covid. And so the challenge is there, there are a few things that need to be put in place. But the point I made at the event today, when I visited, was that even if we were not here, that Zik belongs to all of us. Also convey the request that you have made to Mr. President. And Governor Biyano has also spoken some quiet words in my ear this morning about the willingness also of the state government to lead in the management and maintenance of the place. And I think with this kind of commitment, clearly the ownership that I was looking for is already in place. And clearly, we will find what works very well to preserve the honour and memory of Dr. Nan Desi Kwe. Thank you very much.
First of all, let me pass on the regrets of His Excellency, the Governor of Delta State, Senator Dr. Ifany Okoa, who was in Abuja for meetings and is only just returning to Asaba. He asks that I appreciate the Honorable Minister for finding time to come here today to meet with the community and also with the people of Anambra, the Delta States. But more importantly is that our profound appreciation and respect goes to Mr. President for ensuring that this project stays alive. Now, we're at fifty percent completion and we look forward to the completion date and commissioning sometime in 2022. We've heard from both sides of the divide and the issues that still need to be addressed. And we know that working with the federal government, we definitely will find resolutions to these issues so that the communities and the people of both Delta and Anambra states will continue to enjoy the benefits of this, of this bridge. Honorable Minister, sir, before you leave, I would like to touch on one or two issues that concern us as Deltas. The federal roads here in Delta, which require urgent attention. And some of these roads actually lead to this project which we're here to talk about. One of them is actually the Asaba Benin Expressway, which is failing gradually. And if attention is not given to it in another year or so, we probably may not be able to access this bridge that is under construction. The second one, which has failed completely, is the Ekku Abraka Agboru, which has been awarded by the federal government. And I think this award was about maybe two years ago. Work had started from the Edo State side because it crosses into Edo State, Ishan to be precise. But it's worked and stopped. Honorable Minister, the road has failed on the important project and also the commissioning in 2022. Thank you very much.
I'm indeed very happy to be at this function. I want to seize this opportunity to thank Mr. President for keeping his words. This bridge has been going on, Covid or no Covid, they've made a lot of progress. I want to also commend the commitment of the Honorable Minister of Housing, sorry, of Works on Housing. Because once in a while, he calls me on this project, what is going on, what's happening there? You know, and he shows deep commitment to this assignment. And that's why this assignment has moved the way it has moved, you know. Having said this, I would like to underscore a few points, particularly now that the M D of Julius Vega is here. It's a soft issue, but it's also an important issue. Mr. Weiser would tell you that on five different occasions have personally resolved crisis on the Anambra side of this construction site. You know, and in my view, the issues are not very strong, so to say. You know, there are commitments made by Julius Vega to the host communities, which I understand they've not been able to keep. It would be nice if that is addressed and very quickly too, you know. The issues of compensation, the Honorable Minister has also made a point. What Julius Vega needs to be able to deliver this project by February of 2022 is peace. Absolute peace in all the communities, you know. And he also called for, if you will, perseverance, you know, give and take, so many things will happen. You know, a good picture is imprinted, which is correct, of the economic prospects of this bridge to us. When I say us, I mean the whole of Southeast, the whole of Delta, the whole of Nigeria, you know. And it is important that we support the initiative of the federal government and hold our youths, you know, hold them together. I believe Julius Vega will go a long way in solving that by meeting some of your commitments to them. Beyond that, I want to reassure the federal government that from Anambra side, we will ensure that there's peace, you know. We will ensure that there's peace and what is left is for all of us, for all of us to see far the vision that this bridge will bring to the prospects of all the people around. The multiplier effect of the construction is already magnifying. You know, materials are purchased locally where necessary. You can see the quantum of diesel required. They are not going to get the diesel from Abuja. They are going to buy it from other Delta, Anambra. And money will be circulating. So, the velocity of money shows you the multiples of what we stand to gain, you know. So, I sincerely, on behalf of everybody here, would like to thank President Bouari for keeping his word. I've been to him a few times and all the time he reassures me that you deliver this bridge, irrespective of corn, rain, sun, you know, and they are doing that. Please take a word to the President that we are very grateful and will continue to support these initiatives that is bringing, you know, since it's benefiting all of us, you know. On this note, I want to welcome the Honorable Minister to our land, our land, Delta, Anambra, all of us, you know. And invite you to come again and again, you know, because this time you come, there's a lot of economic activities that will follow. Thank you. So, thank you, everybody. God bless Delta State, God bless Anambra State, God bless the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Thank you very much.